Chairman, whenever you're ready.
I don't like seeing the hard ones.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the last meeting with the correction that Janine discussed.
I'll second if I can.
Yes, you were there.
I can't.
He wasn't.
You were there.
Were you there last?
No, no, I was okay.
He wasn't.
Mr. Miller was?
I'll second.
Okay.
Janine, when you're ready to do your two vote call?
Sure. Mr. Brendel?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Tangman?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Zellman?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. LaJoux is absent. Chairman Pierceall?
Here.
Before we move to do the minutes, I just have to report a little correction on my court that is needed. On the vote for the Ketchum application, I had Mr. Zellman listed as voting yes, only he wasn't in. He wasn't at the meeting, so obviously he couldn't vote. So we need to amend the minutes and remove that, so. We need a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of the last meeting with the correction that Janine discussed.
I'll second if I can.
Yes, you were there.
I can't.
He wasn't.
You were there.
Were you there last?
No, no, I was okay.
He wasn't.
Mr. Miller was?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Quinn is here, says so already.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tangman?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Zellman?
Abstain.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Chairman Pierceall?
Yes.
This time, Chairman, I just said, obviously, our attorney Mark Hittrich isn't here. I didn't know if we wanted to have Emery introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Emery too, and I'm one of the associates that work with Mark. I believe I met everyone a couple months ago.
Okay.
Well, thanks for sitting in for him.
Thank you.
And I believe he's on his way sooner or later.
We will be appearing tonight at this point, yes.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a list of meetings sent to the Coast Guard and the Asbury Park Press, and it's posted on the bulletin board in the Municipal Building and it's also on the Bureau website. I'd like someone to make a motion about the minutes from the October 22 meeting.
Can we do that?
Did you say that, then?
All right, we did that. Correspondence? Well, we, Janine, I believe, put four pamphlets of the New Jersey planners on our, at our places, so we...
You have some nice at-home in-person reading.
Yeah, we have plenty of at-home reading. The old business that we have tonight is Resolution 2015-13, David and Lori Ketchum, application. I don't know what the Z is for, but...
That's my indication that it's a zoning application.
Okay, so should, yeah, all right, Z 2015-005, make a motion on that? I make a motion that we accept the Resolution 2015-13.
I'll second that.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Abstain.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tangman?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Zellman?
Abstain.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Chairman Pierceall?
Yes. Our new business tonight is Application Z 2015-06, Owen and Melissa Quinn.
Obviously, I just accused myself.
Owen is going to step down, but Owen, you can be part of the discussion and if you see fit. I'd like to also welcome tonight Emery, who is sitting in for Mr. Hittrich. He's at a meeting and he said that he would be here sooner or later, but, you know, they won't press on that one. Oh, no, okay, so he is on his way.
Mr. Chairman, before we start this application or hear this application, I have a couple problems with this application. A few months ago, we gave a variance to a person to extend his porch, and at that time, we said we didn't want to set a precedent by doing that, and we would handle each case on an individual basis. So in light of that end, unfortunately, with all due respect to Mr. and Mrs. Quinn, Mr. Quinn being a member of this board, I don't see how we can even hear this case without leaving ourselves open for it to come back and bite us in the butt. I would like to make the motion that we table this application and look into having it be heard by another municipality, springlight seeker, wherever, where we would not be in the position of voting on something that's a member of this board. Mr. Quinn is a member and withstanding of this board, but I think we, I think we need to have somebody else do this. And for that reason, I would like to put forward a motion that we table this until such time as we can find another municipality.
Well, right, I, we, this board, we heard Andrew's application not so long ago. But how long ago was that, Andrew? Two years, about two years ago. And at that time, we had no problem, and I don't believe Andrew had any problems with it. Maybe he didn't get everything he wanted, or maybe we asked him to do some things. But we all live in the town, board members and applicants, and we need to, you know, we need to just act in a prudent way and try to take care of each applicant as they come along, whether they're a board member or, or not. That's my opinion, and maybe Emery has the...
There is also case law that says there's no conflict of interest where a board member, even an official at that point, comes before the board of their own town. Everyone is volunteers, and if you started to say there was a conflict at this point, then you didn't have any volunteer, but you're only willing to volunteer for the same purpose of having this so-called conflict that is, um...
Well, there may not be a conflict of interest, but the appearance of such. And when somebody comes in the next time, if they're turned down for their variance for the same purpose, then I think we're leaving ourselves open for a lawsuit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second Mr. Miller's resolution there, and I agree that, I don't believe that, we did hear Mr. Zellman's thing, and I was a little uncomfortable about that, but I'm getting more uncomfortable as more members of the board show up for things. There's no reason that the planning board couldn't hear this or another municipality, and I agree with Mr. Miller that, although, as the attorney said, there's, there's, there's no impropriety in doing it this way, but there is an appearance of, we're supposed to be impartial, and so how can you be impartial voting on a member of your own group? So I, I second Mr. Miller, and I'd like to hear a vote on that, so.
I do have a question, and let me ask you. The planning board is not the planning board or another town. Are they even allowed to give variances in this town?
If, that's okay. I mean, if it was bound to be a conflict of interest, then that is the path that you would have to take is to go to a different town. But the planning board, you, the Quinn's would basically be in the same situation. Maybe or maybe not, they know people on that board. It's not, switching it to a planning board is not going to be anything that they would hear.
But Mr. Quinn is not a member of the planning board. He's a member of the zoning board of adjustment.
But who's to say he doesn't have any kind of relationship with them as well?
I'm sure he does. We all have friends and real people. But, but we're us, and he's one of us, and you're asking us to vote on us, and that, to me, is a problem.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask the attorney a question, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Are we setting a, is there a conflict of interest here?
No.
When he recused himself, there's not a legal conflict of interest, correct?
No.
Okay. And are we setting any precedent at all regarding this particular application?
No.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So should we, should we put this to a voter or not? I mean, we have...
I second Mr. Miller's.
You have a second.
I got a motion, I'm starting.
So would you phrase what you want us to vote on right now?
I would like us to postpone this and look into the possibility of having another town or whatever hear this case because of the appearance of impropriety. We stated that we didn't want to set a precedent, and I think this sets a bad precedent. If it were, if it weren't somebody from the board, why, that wouldn't be quite as bad because we could all, we did state the last time we did this that we would judge each case individually. But in this case, I just have a problem with it being a member of the board. And so I'd like to see us table this motion, or table this hearing of this application and look into having some, some other entity listen to it and pass on.
Emery, could, Emery, could I have your, Owen would like to say something as the applicant, and would this be an appropriate time for him to say it, or should we?
I, I would think that he should be able to speak before you vote on your motion, whether or not you want to...
So let's, let's swear in, you know, Owen.
Melissa.
Excuse me, I've never seen a procedure where a motion is made, it is seconded, and then somebody gets up and gets to talk before it's, it's voted on. Never in any, any meeting I've ever attended. Council meetings, board meetings, planning board meetings. Unheard of.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question to the attorney?
Yes, please.
Are you an attorney? Is that your opinion that he can be able to speak before, that's your legal opinion?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Owen, stand up. Melissa, if you want to stand, just, you swore in, and then we'll see where we go from here. Stay.
Do you swear in front to tell the truth of tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And say your names?
Owen Quinn.
Melissa Quinn.
Okay, um, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I, before Melissa, if you'd like to.
I know. I mean, um, let me just say that I am an attorney, but I am not a land use attorney. I did do a little research on this issue because I was concerned of that Owen being able to proceed with that, and I'd just like to say that there is a statute directly on point. It's NJSA 40A:9-22.5K that says nothing shall prohibit a local government officer or employee or members of his immediate family from representing himself or themselves in negotiations or proceedings concerning his or their own interests. And there are a couple of cases directly on point that talk about the potential for the chilling effect of volunteerism. We are in a very small town. There are, you know, our roots here are deep. Owen and I have lived here for a number of years, and I think we would have a hard time, and it would be unfair to make us go to another town to hear our, our application. And I submit that it would be, in essence, penalizing Owen and myself and our family from being able to violate ourselves of the law in a procedural way. And, uh, did you want to add anything?
The only thing I was going to add was that Ray was concerned about future things coming from the board. I would be happy to resign and not be on the board after this application, if that would be...
Or before, you know, you could submit the reservation.
Please don't take this personally.
But your concern is with future applications.
Right.
So I'm perfectly happy stepping down.
Well, like I said, this isn't a personal thing. It is strictly what could appear to be inappropriate, and in future cases, somebody comes in and says, well, he gave a member of the board an extension to extend his porch, why can't I get mine?
I believe I can say this, I believe I can say the same thing. We granted McLeary's, the same exact house, same exact porch.
Exactly. And now you're coming here asking for the same thing that you voted yes to give McLeary.
Why don't we vote on this motion, excuse me?
Yes.
Why don't we vote on the motion?
All right, yes, everybody, Mr. Hittrich?
Yes. Hello.
Where'd you come from?
Stepped right in.
Good time. Don't leave, you're late. All right. Kill it now.
Mr. Miller has made a motion that this application not be heard by this board, that it go to another municipality due to the fact that Mr. Quinn is a member of the board. We realize that there's nothing that prevents Mr. Quinn from appearing before this board according to the law. However, both Mr. Miller and myself, who are seconding the motion, feel that it is, that it lacks impartiality to have, have this case Mr. Quinn's heard here. So right now, we have a motion, and it's been seconded.
May I jump in if I can?
Yes.
Thank you. We asked if this was a conflict of interest. Your colleague said it was not. We asked if it set any precedents. Your colleague said it does not. Do you concur with those statements?
I do, and if I could just elaborate on this. This is, when these issues come up, and incidentally, this is, it's not unique, this issue. What governs and how we're guided by that decision, we just looked to this book, this Cox book. And there's discussions about disqualifications and conflicts. And I've researched the issue. And my opinion, based on the municipal land use law, is that this board can hear this application. However, if individual members of the board don't, do not believe that they can be impartial, that they cannot be objective in hearing the application, then they have the ability to recuse themselves. But my question, so, and, and also, the, under the municipal land use law, even an elected official has the right to come before a, in one of the board. Now, Mr. Quinn is an appointed official. So there is, there is no case law that says that a member of a board, an appointed official, cannot make an application before a particular board. If you, if you remember, and so I'll, I'll put it on the record. There was a case that, that we discussed at our, interestingly enough, our last board meeting, which had to do with the, a different issue, but the Jock case, Jock versus the Board of Adjustment. We talked about that case at our last meeting for, for a different reason, but there's actually a discussion about these type of issues in that, in that case. And there was a discussion about, in that case, regarding the statute, which is, it says that nothing shall prohibit a government officer from representing himself in proceedings concerning his or his own family's interests before his agency. And so that's, that's, that's a statute. And in Jock, they, they, there was a discussion about whether, they questioned whether the validity of that, that statute. And so there's a discussion in that, in that case about it. But in Cox, and I'll read it directly from, from Cox. It is the law firm's view that the court's holding in Jock could be seen as setting forth a bright line that would preclude any local government officer from testifying before a board of which he is a member when any land or use in the community, including his own, own home, was at issue. This would undermine the legislature's intention in NJS 40A:9-22.5K to permit a government officer to represent himself before his board in certain proceedings that concern his own interests. It is hoped that case law will develop additional criteria for determining when an appearance of an impropriety may arise, perhaps based upon whether and to what extent a board member would experience a significant financial benefit from such an action. In the absence of such further criteria, Jock might read to discourage otherwise qualified persons in a municipality serving on zoning and planning boards. It is also difficult to reconcile the Jock's course sense, and once, once again, this was a discussion in that case. It would be, it was, it is also difficult to reconcile the Jock's course sense that a greater opportunity for potential conflict would arise from a fellow board member appearing before his or her own board than would arise from a mayor appearing before a board as to which he had the power of appointment, as in the matter of Wiskowski. So the Cox book has made the determination, and unless there's a case saying otherwise at the defendant's ruling, that they believe that the statute allows for a board member to proceed before a board. That's my reading of it. That's my legal opinion.
So legally, we're, couple seconds, right?
I am of the opinion that a board member has the right to have, to proceed before the board with an application. Now, the question goes back to the board. If you, if you, as an individual board member, do not feel, based on a relationship, that you could hear the matter impartially or fairly, based on a working relationship, a, whatever that may be, then we, you certainly have the right to raise that conflict and recuse yourself from the, from the application, and then we would, that's why we have alternates.
All right, so where does that leave us with the, the, the thing that Mr. Miller...
We made a motion and we seconded the motion.
All right, let's do it.
But if I could ask a question, and you made the motion, so...
Mr. Miller made the motion, I seconded the motion, yeah.
I'm not understanding how it would be that this goes to another town.
Well, they would have, they would have to contact the other town, and so they would hear it. Well, we have a planning board.
The Board of Adjustment can give variances.
With our town?
Yeah, I don't, I don't... Can I ask a legal question, or a turn? Mr. Chairman, can I ask a legal question, or a turn? Have you ever seen in your career a precedent where another town asks another town's board to hear an application?
I have never seen that.
Okay, so it seems to...
Well, then, what if, what if everyone here had a personal relationship with Mr. Quinn, and we all stepped down and recused ourselves? Who would hear the application?
That's a great question.
But that's also not the case.
I can answer the question, I can.
Yeah, who would hear it?
An option would be that the members of the planning board would be, would have to serve as alternate zoning board members for the application.
So then you become the Board of Adjustment for that purpose, for, for the purpose of that application?
We, we are not set up like that. By the way, and I'm not, I'm not aware of this, I've been doing this for a while here. Another level of scrutiny is if there were some, if the town adopted their own ethical model.
Yes.
Dealing with those issues. I'm not aware that's, that's, that, that exists.
Probably, probably not.
Yeah, and, and...
The chances of that happening is...
Right, and, and it would be unusual for, that's just another layer, but, hope that answered your question.
Right.
So we have a motion.
Right.
And a second.
Janine, vote on that. Mr. Brendel?
I'm going to vote no. I don't see any potential conflict. This is something that in the past we've done. The current board members have, had work done on their own homes as their residents in the town, as well as board members. And they had to recuse themselves, and everybody went forward in a professional manner. I vote no.
Mr. Miller?
I vote yes, because I believe it leaves us open for possible conflict in the future when other people want something, and maybe you turn them down and they can come back at it.
Mr. Tangman?
I also vote yes.
Mr. Weiss?
I vote no.
Mr. Zellman?
I vote no.
Mr. Martin?
I vote no. We have, we have an attorney here, and attorney's job is to tell us what we can and cannot do legally. If we're going to disregard the attorney's advice, there's no point in having an attorney. Attorney says there's no conflict, there's no conflict. My second point is, I think we need to just be careful with this. Because we want people who are qualified and honest, like Owen Quinn, to be volunteering in towns like this, not walking away from them. So, yeah, I vote no.
And just a quick question to Attorney Hittrich. Normally, we take Mr. Pierceall's vote. Can, should we do that on this matter too, then? I mean, not...
I'm not, I'm not.
We would take Mr. Pierceall's vote on this matter as well, only because that's the precedent that we do on all our applications. Okay. And Chairman Pierceall?
I vote no. Like Tom said, you know, Owen has, you know, proved himself as a reliable and a good board member, and we need him. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to lose him. Over the years, I've seen people come and go off the board for who knows, who knows every reason under the sun. So when we get somebody that's good, we like to keep them. And also, I don't want to send, you know, anybody, Owen, or anybody out of town to have some other municipality, you know, hear our, you know, hear our, you know, zoning cases. So for those reasons, and probably a lot more that I could enumerate, I'd, you know, say no.
I just want to add for the record, and I tried to articulate part of the reasoning that's found in the book. By the way, the opinion I gave is based on what's in the book. I didn't, and I, I respect what, you know, what's in here. But one of the reasons, and I can't read you every page that addresses this, is, but it, it references, I think it's what the chairman was alluding to, is they, they want to encourage people to be volunteers on boards, and people think that they... they wanna encourage people to be volunteers on boards, and if people think that they can't, can't make an application for, before a board and do something with their own individual home, the feeling, the reasoning behind the statute and what's cited in this book is doing it otherwise discourages volunteers from participating in the process. And I think that's why they, why the statute, why the Cox book. One of the reasons why it's permissible.
So like, as we're ready to proceed with the application, so. They were sworn in before, so should we say them in again, or is it okay?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing. Before we start, I have a question for Mr. Lobosco that is lettered here. I just, I just, something I don't understand, and I can explain it. On the variance testimony page, about the third sentence now, it says, I'm trying to figure out what does, what does, what do we, what needs to be proved, okay? It says, "In the absence of proving a hardship, the applicant must present proof that this deviation from the ordinance requirement substantially benefits any detriment to the neighborhood or public good." How do you benefit a detriment? I don't understand what that means.
Taking away from.
Well, maybe we need a legal opinion.
More of a legal. Well, that's the hardship.
Well, it says, to, to, the applicant must present proof that this deviation from the ordinance requirement, the deviation, changing the ordinance requirement substantially benefits any detriment to the neighborhood or public good. To me, it doesn't make sense. If, if he should maybe prove that it substantially benefits the neighborhood or the public good, or... What does that mean? Benefits any detriment?
It's the detriment of giving you barriers.
Okay.
It benefits that way any detriment.
Okay, all right, okay. That's fine, okay.
Is that fair? I didn't write it, so.
No, but that's, that's why, okay.
It's just probably worth for the barriers.
Yeah.
So, we all said?
But, just wanna put two things out there. One, I obviously have impeccable timing, but number, number two. Number two, now that we're gonna hear the application, and this is also something that needs to be discussed based on my reading of this type of situation. Does anybody believe that based on any relationship, that they have a conflict in this application, they cannot be fair or impartial in hearing the matter? Because I think that's also, it's, it's required to address that aspect before we start. And if so, reveal it.
Seeing, obviously, I'm hearing a response, all right, so. Let's move on. So anyway, since they've already been sworn in, but, well, you weren't sworn in, so.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's but the truth, signs proceeding?
I did.
Okay.
Come on, hopefully you can sit in there, so comfortable care for the applicants.
Okay. Could you make that look?
Okay.
I am Ross Quinn. Owen and I are, I am a real estate attorney in Spring Lake. We've been married for almost twenty years. We have two children, Matthews, fifteen, and Cara, who's twelve, Parisdale, in Spring Lake Heights Elementary School. Owen and I both grew up in Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights, Harriet, and we have never considered leaving. In nineteen ninety-seven, we purchased our first home in Spring Lake Heights over on Wall Road. In two thousand and three, we adopted both of our kids, and we grew out of the small two-bedroom cage that we had there. So in late two thousand and three, we sold and purchased our current home at nine seventeen Park Avenue, which is right across from the Spring Lake Golf Club. It is a split-level home with a staggered front. And in order to improve the aesthetics of the home and to maximize the beautiful golf club view, so looking, of course, we're proposing to replace and expand our existing narrow front porch. Our home is approximately fourteen hundred square foot, three-bedroom, split level, with a one-car garage. It sits on an oversized lot, which is ninety-one by one-fifteen, resulting in ten thousand seven hundred and ten square feet. And it's in the R three zone. So we are here tonight to request a variance to replace and expand the footprint of our front porch. We are looking to be granted, we're already in the setback, the twenty-five-foot setback, or the thirty-foot setback. So we're looking for an additional three point two feet into the front yard setback. We have an existing bay window, bow window on our front that cuts into our porch space. So we are looking for enough room so that we can have some furniture. We like to cover it and avoid the views. In your engineer's letter, and please bear with me, because we haven't done.
Sorry.
All right. You know, we're, we're saying that the benefits of the front porch with regard to the neighborhood, we like front porches. We feel it fosters a sense of community. We all have very busy lives in this day and age. Most people work, and front porches, I believe, contribute to the sense of community. Your engineer was looking for the distance the proposed porch will be from the front of the curb. Now, Park Avenue is interesting, because right in front of our house, there is a curb in the front. I don't know if now I should do exhibits, should I?
Sure.
Okay. So, we don't have anything additional to what we submitted with our package, but I do have the survey.
Morton, do you wanna mark these in the survey and the evidence, or?
Yeah, why don't we mark this, anyone?
Okay.
So what's the date of that?
The survey was done by Charles Sermont, and it is dated seven six fifteen. And then I also have a plot plan from Mr. Sermont as well, which could we mark that?
No, we can make that A two.
A two?
What date is that?
And that is dated September eleventh, two thousand and fifteen.
This is Quinn. Do you wanna just check for the base sticker on it? And that's the survey one.
Oh, thank you.
And that's the plot plan.
All right. And that's the plot. Okay, so the engineer was asking the distance the proposed porch will be from the front of the curb. Now, if I could direct the board's attention to the plot plan, it does show that there's a bend in the street. So the, the distance on the east side was measured to be thirty-seven feet from the curb. And the distance to the curb on the other side of the porch is thirty-five feet. And with regard.
Melissa, can you just repeat those, those two, those numbers you just?
Absolutely. Thirty-seven feet from the front of the proposed on the east side, and thirty-five feet from the curb on the, on the west side. The letter from the engineer also asked for us to provide the front alignment with the neighbors' houses. I've included in the packet a photo of the neighbor's house to the east, which should be, is it at this one? And I can state, so that would be exhibit A three.
Where is that neighborhood relationship?
It's directly east.
So the building in your house is a little left this way?
Yes, exactly. And that porch is thirty-five from the curb.
I believe that, that house was before, it's not too long ago.
Exactly.
Did they put the porch on at that time?
Yes.
That's what they came, that's what they came from the variance.
And this board did grant it, so it's a feasible one. All right, so.
And you, you, or Mr. Quinn took that letter, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
What about the other side, Melissa?
On the other side, there is, at the same style house, a staggered split level, and that does not have any porch at all. I did not measure that distance, but it is, it is in line. Perhaps the aerial photo could help you with that.
That's okay. Is that where the bend, the bend happens from going west to east, correct?
Yes, that happens right.
So they're coming, that's where you're bending out, right?
It's like, you're right on the middle of the bend.
Yes, exactly.
In the middle of the bend, no?
So, you know, it's a beautiful spot, and I think it would really improve the look of the house, the aesthetics of the house. And we don't have any neighbors across from us who are objecting, and, and nobody who's here. Well, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but.
Just lose.
Yes, all right. So the impact the construction would have on the neighborhood, I would, I would submit that the impact would be positive. The house, the porch that we do have is crumbling, is deteriorating, it's made of concrete. It absolutely needs to be replaced, as does all the siding and the roof. So we wanna do some improvement, and we have to do them soon, because we, our roof is really not looking good at all. So we are hoping that we can afford with this in the spring. Okay, I think that's all I have. And, you know, I respectfully submit that the variance be granted. We are well within the building envelope. You know, our lot coverage is well within the, within the parameters of the R three zone. And we're just looking for relief from the front setback.
Are you gonna do anything with the window that both have to leave at, and just pull out with the board, so you know?
Right, exactly. And that's why we are asking for that eight point two feet, so that we can have some furniture and be, if not have to swoosh by. Also, the, you know, we have a picture of the front of our house, which does show that those type of split levels do have a staggered front, so there's twelve inches that we're losing already there from the, from the porch.
So basically, from what you have, you're only coming out a little over three feet?
Exactly.
You know, where's the street?
Correct, yes. I mean, we do wanna cover it.
Yes.
And I think that in the packet, there's a drawing by Joseph Walker, who's an architect, who's also local, and I, I would submit it, it looks very nice.
I have a application on the width of the porch.
Please.
This is planned for nine, it says nine feet. I think it's at eight point two.
Yeah, it does say nine.
We're asking for nine feet, but it'll only be eight point two into the setback, because of the staggered second story on the west side is about, almost a foot forward from the first story on the east side.
Well, and not, and not even that. I mean, we're talking about the setback. So the, we're proposing that the porch be nine feet wide, but we would only be in the setback. And, thank you, Gus. Thanks, Matt.
Any board member have any questions for Mrs. Quinn?
Yes, I do. On the addendum to the application, and he said this. He said that a number six, says the subject site is surrounded by other single-family homes with comparable porches and overlooked development. By comparable porches, do you mean comparable now, or comparable when you build a new porch?
I was, I think I was referring to comparable when we build the new porch.
Okay, but in that case, there's only one house that has a porch that's next to you. That's, everything else is, on the corner, on, on Tenth Avenue, there's a house that has three steps that go up to the front door. Nine nineteen has three steps and a, and a small platform. Nine fifteen has three steps, and they have a porch, nine fifteen. That's the picture you gave us, nine fifteen.
Okay.
Nine thirteen has three steps and a stoop. Nine eleven has three steps and a stoop. Nine oh seven has three steps, and they have a porch. They're a little bit, but I'm not sure the size of it.
Yeah.
And nine oh five has three steps and a stoop, so.
Well, I, yeah, I'm.
So I, so that, that leads me to question number seven, where you say that upon completion, the covered porch will be architecturally and aesthetically consistent with the existing structure and the neighborhood. You'd be one of the two people that have porches.
John, you're not taking into account other houses on Lake Avenue that have.
No, I'm not taking into account.
But that's the neighborhood. It's not just Park Avenue.
Well, from the picture you gave us of Lake, I don't see many porches on Lake Avenue in this photo. In fact, I see maybe none.
Well, honestly.
Opposite view on Lake. So this is the evidence that you submitted, right?
Well, I would submit that you, as individuals who reside in town, correct, that you're familiar with porches in the neighborhood. And I apologize, I'm not forced in this land use law, but I would submit that, I would submit that we have porches in, in town. And I believe that our porch is, is gonna be pleasantly pleasing, and it's gonna look nice. I don't really know where we're going with that.
I'm just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, as I'm just thinking, well, we're going down Lake Avenue, and Owen McLaughlin's have a porch coming up their ass. I know McCleary just got approval for a porch going up their ass. I'm pretty sure McCarthy has a porch on his house on the other side of Lake. So there's, there's quite a bit of porch activity in that side of town, between Lake, Prospect, Eighth, Ninth, that little quad, there's, there's a decent amount.
The Santos house, oh, two or three doors down, has a porch.
Yep, see, it does have a front porch.
Then why do we even hear these applications? Why don't we just put up the sign saying, anybody wants a nine-foot porch, just go and do it?
I think we find that true.
Because we give somebody an eye-foot porch, our members vote to do that, then the next person comes in, they want an eye-foot porch. And I, and I mentioned during the full McCleary application that this is creating a bad precedent, that we're just, we're eliminating the setbacks in the front of houses. We're just giving.
If I could just interject for a second. First of all, I don't think any decisions have been made by any board member on this application.
Over.
Secondly, I know there's always discussion about precedent, but the fact, the matter is that your obligation is to judge every application on its individual merits. So that's really part, part of the process.
And what I was gonna say is that over the years, we've gotten quite a few applicants, and they've been about porches. And I don't think we've ever denied a porch. It's been the general feeling, as far as I can get tell, is that most of the board members felt porches were desirable. And that, as Mrs. Quinn was saying, they tend to get people to sit on them. They tend to, you know, if you're sitting on your porch, you see a neighbor go by, you might say something to that person who ordinarily, you'd be in the house, maybe watching the TV, or, you know, or playing a video game or something like that. So I think we have been porch-friendly. As Mr. Brendel was kind of indicating, we, we have, you know, talked about, you know, trying to get something in place by the town council, so that people wouldn't have to maybe come before the works to do a porch. If they could do it, if they were, you know, you know, within a certain parameter.
I think the, the problem with trying to do something town-wise, you know, town-wide, is that there's too many houses that don't conform to zoning, and setbacks are all screwy. So I believe the council has left it to be dealt with on an individual. So, I, I believe the council has left it to be dealt with on an individual, one-by-one basis, and that's where we are. So, we, that's why we, that's why we're here.
Yes, but we, we never individually deny anybody a front porch.
But if someone comes in here and asks us something completely outrageous, like a front porch is a foot from the street, I'm pretty sure we'd deny, I would deny.
What about somebody who comes in here and the, the, the evidence they give says they want to be able to stretch out their legs? That's why they need it to be nine feet, like a previous applicant.
As long as it, in my opinion, as long as the, the porch of.
So, the board accepts that as proof, that, that.
Trying to say what I want to say here.
Yeah.
If you're building something that's, in the context, structures the neighborhood, and it looks like it's part of the neighborhood, and adds value to the home and the neighborhood without impacting anything negatively, I don't see a reason why not to go for a porch. If you want to build a porch that's a foot from the street, I'm going to vote no. That's me, that's mine. Sorry.
That isn't before the board tonight, nor any other application.
Just philosophizing, sorry.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
I'm addressing, I'm addressing all the comments. I'm addressing all the comments that have been made regarding prior applications, all that, we're here for this application.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
That's, that's what you're guided by.
Are there any other questions for the quints?
I have a question.
Fine.
In reference to the drawing by Mr. Walker, very good-looking porch. Is there any work being done to the rest of the house, or is the front porch just coming off the existing roof?
The front porch will come off the existing roof, but we're getting a new roof, new siding.
Yeah, new, new roofing material, but that roof structure from the existing part of the house isn't being changed?
No, it's not.
No, it's just a, a gable end coming off the house?
Correct.
Okay. How did you come up with the nine feet?
We felt with the, uh, fact that the house is actually, on the east side, is set back a foot, and the fact that we have the bow window that takes up space, so we actually would only have eight feet of space on the porch.
And maybe even less with the railings imposed?
Yes, definitely.
So, your usable space is somewhere in the seven-foot range, right?
Correct. I think that's appropriate, yes.
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if Fred was here, he'd go one step further. What are the material choices?
We honestly haven't gotten that far.
Are there any more, uh, questions from the board? Okay, we'll consider this part done, and now, um, we'll open it up to the voice of the public. Is anyone here tonight, uh, that would like to speak, uh, you know, concerning this application?
If I could, if it's, first of all, if anybody from the public has any questions regarding the testimony.
I'm saying there's none. Move right on.
If anybody has any, from the public has any comment?
Yeah, yeah. You want to come up, Frank? You're going to be quoting it.
You're saying your name and address, will you? Frank Russo, let's see, 918 Lake Avenue. Swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and thus put the truth aside and proceeding? Uh, I did. Thank you. I'm just here to, uh, to let the board know, I'm, I'm behind the category, and I have no objection to this. The porches have been granted in the areas, it does nothing to make the house better. And, uh, I'm all for it, is it?
So, thank you. Any final things from the quints before we go to a vote? No? Okay. Do you need me to take rolls?
Wait a minute, you've got to make a motion.
Yeah, I was just saying if you were still waiting.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Quinn's application.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Brendel?
I'm going to vote, uh, yes for this application. Porches are, have been an issue in the town as long as I've been on the board, and that's, uh, several years. Porches are included in the master plan, but the problem is, when you build a new house, there's no problem putting a porch in and conforming to the setbacks. With the, uh, a town that's already complete, such as this one, in order to add front porches, you have to get relieved from the board. And, uh, that's kind of what we're here for, is to, to keep reins on these porches and, uh, take them on an individual basis. Front porches also add to the community and promote good neighbors. And as there's no objections from the neighbors, I vote yes.
Mr. Miller?
I'm going to vote no. I did not, it, say what I said and introduce the, uh, the proposal that I made in any way to be vindictive. The only thing I was considering was the fact that we can get ourselves in trouble by okaying this one, and then the next one, if we turn one to somebody down because they want, uh, 12 feet instead of 11 and a half, or something like that, we can leave ourselves open to, uh, a lawsuit or problems. There's nothing personal with the Quinn's, I have no reason to have anything personal against him. From what the drawing is, it's going to be an attractive addition to your house, but, uh, I, I feel that I must vote no.
I'm sorry, but the reason you're voting no, I just, I'm trying to.
The reason for voting no was because I, first of all, I entered, I introduced a resolution to not even hear this, so.
Will you continue?
I think silly for me to turn around and go, yes. I know it can be done, I can vote any way I want, and I could abstain.
So, based on your motion?
Based on my motion, right.
Okay.
There's nothing personal at all in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Tanjman?
I'm also going to vote, uh, no on, on this. The porch is going to be, um, into the front setback, um, and the house is already non-conforming, and we're increasing a non-conformity, um, by allowing that to happen. The porch that exists now, uh, could, can be repaired, the porch would still exist, nobody's denying the Quinn's porch, it just wouldn't be the nine-foot wide porch. Also, I don't believe that, um, that it, the, the new porch is going to be consistent with the existing structures. As I pointed out, hardly any of these existing structures have porches. And, um, so then I'm going to, um, vote no on this application.
Mr. Weiss?
I'm going to vote yes, I, I think it is a enhancement to the neighborhood, actually. I, I like the idea of a front porch on your house, and the house looks a little very nice with the porch on it, and I don't see any fringes on the sidewalk or anything. It's lovely.
Mr. Dunne?
I'm going to vote yes, um, for the standing reasons stated by Mr. Weiss and Mr. Brendel. I think porches are a good addition to the town, I see absolutely no reason to turn this one down. So, yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes. That's it. You know how I feel.
Chairman, here's one.
I vote, uh, yes. I think that, as, you know, as said by myself and maybe some others, the, the porches, uh, are, are friendly. And, uh, I walk down your street a lot, and I need a friend, and I'm going to rest in a place. And, you know, what you had didn't seem like, you know, desirable, but now that we have these cushy chairs out there and, you know, space, I'm a happy place to, you know, rest my weary soul, and, uh, I wish you the best of luck in it, and, you know, you, in a way, you're, you're still going to be quite, you know, quite a place with me, if there is a 35, uh, place. It, it'll be great. Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a request for you that, that on the next nice day, that you drive around town and look and see how many people are sitting on their porches, and I bet you'll find maybe one out of 100 porches that have anybody on them. Because they're not, they're not meant to be sat on, they're meant to be additions to the house to make the property value go up, they're meant to be status symbols.
Is there a problem? Is there a problem with property value, you know?
I like. Well, the problem is to the neighbors who don't have to pay more taxes because your property values went up. That's, that's the problem.
All right. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion, we're out of here.
Second.
Thank you.
All right.